At this time, we'll call on meeting to order. We welcome everyone to the McDowell County Board of Commissioners remotely meeting. And we'll begin our meeting with prayer and pledge. So this time, I'll call Commissioner Peters, listen to prayer, and Mr. Bond, listen to pledge.
Let's pray. "Gracious God, we do call upon you, holy name this evening, Lord, and just give you thanks and honor and praise, Lord, for this beautiful weather we have. Thank for praise through the storms, while we pray for the ones that had damage, Lord, and the life that was lost in Davidson County. While we pray for our county business tonight, pray for our leaders, Lord, across locally, state, federal, guys that were going through this time, Lord, that we've never seen before. Help us always to have our faith in you and our trust in you, God, to reach down and touch, Lord. There's no doubt in our mind that, God, you can move this virus out. And we just pray tonight, dear God, that God just lay your hand upon it and move it out of the way. And that we would give you all the honor and glory for everything that's done. Jesus' name. Amen."
Amen.
Pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for the seat. Okay, we have minutes before us, and if you see these minutes, if you had a chance to look at them, what's the prayer of the board concerning the minutes?
Most approved, the answer is yes.
Most approved, next.
Second.
Second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, you pose like a sign. Also, we have tonight's agenda before us, and at this time, will the visiting commissioner or staff have any additions or deletions to the agenda as presented tonight? There being, then, what's the prayer of the board concerning the approval of tonight's agenda?
Most approved, the answer is yes.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. You pose like a sign. At this time, let's move to our first item on our appointment schedule, and we have Mr. William Keller and Craig Walker here tonight with us. And they've done an excellent job. Our board, the whole board, appreciates, William, the work that y'all are doing, and we can't say that enough, but here again, thank you to you and your staff for being on top of this pandemic and all you've done. So the floor is yours, sir. Welcome to the board. Well, welcome to the July hour, not the board room.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thanks for allowing us to come back and present and provide an update. The total numbers for McDowell County as of this afternoon, 224 total tests have been conducted, 18 positives, 189 negatives, and 17 pending tests that the health department has for COVID-19. North Carolina numbers, 4,884 positive COVID-19 tests, 97 fatal. North Carolina bed availability for the hospitals, there's currently 842 ICU beds available in North Carolina and 6,388 inpatient beds. Our operations section, our top priority remains ensuring that frontline healthcare providers, first responders, and others have access to personal protection equipment. That is in conjunction with our logistics section. Also, one of the top priorities remains mitigating against the virus from entering adult care homes and nursing facilities. So I'd like to walk you through a couple of things that we have done. From day one of the EOC activation, we've had a DSS representative in the EOC who has constant contact with these facilities. This past Friday, we conducted a conference call with 100% participation rate from these facilities. They were on the line. They heard the latest guidance from the CDC. They heard Deputy Director Walker give guidance as far as pre-planning in case they do have a positive case within the facility, and then other mitigation activities that they can take to prevent this from entering their facility. We have pushed out personal protection equipment from our logistics warehouse to these adult care homes and nursing facilities, and we continue to provide that real-time coordination with the DSS representative in the EOC. Things important to note, that both of the nursing homes that are required, the new guidance and directive from Governor Cooper that went into effect at 5:00, both nursing facilities in McDowell County were complying weeks in advance of this directive coming out. We continue, the operations section continues to assist the health departments with PUIs or persons under investigation, assisting employers who have questions, whether they have employees that have been tested, whether they have individuals who have went home sick. The EOC remains at the forefront of assisting the employers in the county with these questions and coordinating with the health department. Things important, that the employers have one stop that they can come to to get questions answered rapidly. We also are continuing to assist with tracking close contacts, is extremely labor intensive for the health department, as well as the operations section, to assist in tracking individuals who are under investigation or have tested positive, and then tracking all of the contacts that may have occurred days prior to the test, coming back or being positive. Working with various emergency agencies to track potential exposures. We're seeing a number of counties have first responders that are being quarantined because of exposures that have taken place. Also providing real-time follow-up for any patient transported on EMS ambulances to understand what those test results are, and then backtrack to the various responders who are on those calls to ensure their health and well-being. Operations section continues to work in regards to medical surge planning, close coordination with the hospital, as well as North Carolina emergency management on medical surge. And we are currently working on a date to re-establish the tents at McDowell Hospital. They were taken down in advance of the severe weather to protect not only the equipment, but for someone to be injured and flying to breathe. Telehealth program for EMS and community paramedics is finalized. We're working on some additional items with Gateway Family, who has lented their assistance. And then we continue daily conference calls with control policy group, that is all the government entities and the key players or key agencies involved in managing this disaster. Twice a week, we're doing coordination calls with all of our community partners. We've had over 100 people at one time on these coordination calls, and it's an opportunity for each agency in the county to hear the latest update on efforts to contain this virus. Also continue our daily calls with the employees within our own division. While we're not seeing them with the EOC being activated, we're not having that day-to-day interaction in our stations, so making sure that everyone is on the same page has been important from the start. Human Services Division, our GOAD coordinator is active in the EOC. They conducted a conference call with multiple organizations in relation to feeding operations. They had a tactics call this morning to look at the increasing demand. A number of these are referrals from the school system, as well as our senior citizens, our waymen, and Ashley has been involved in these conversations as well. I think it's important to highlight the work that McDowell County Schools and the tremendous work they have done. So far, provided over 70,950 Gravago meals since they first started back in March. They fed 3,950 meals for students today through their Gravago meal program. Footy Hills, Gateway, Grace Community, and others are involved in this tactics call and meetings with regards to feeding operations. The volunteers have sewn over 1,033 masks for various healthcare providers and others who are in need of protective masking, certainly appreciate that. Plans section continues to produce incident action plans, 72-hour operational periods. We've heard we talked in weeks past, it's important that the EOC remains focused on goals and objectives, and we're holding each section to accomplishing those on a daily basis. We're looking at contingency planning for various scenarios. Should we see the virus break out in congregant settings? That is one of our top concerns and one of the top priorities, as I said, in the ops section, is to keep this virus out of congregant settings, because that's where it certainly can spread the fastest. Strong emphasis on documentation. As we look forward, there needs to be a playbook per se built for the next pandemic, even if it's 30 years down the road. It's important for whoever is in this position or in the entire team to know what decisions are having to be made, what the thinking was prior to this decision. So all our sections are trying to capture that. Logistics section will continue to source PPE from private sector. The strategic national stockpile remains depleted, so we are using the private sector to retain PPE, public information. Now, the COVID call centers filled with over 880 calls. Our online COVID-19 screening app is providing directions for over 100 individuals per day on average. And then our PIOs have done a remarkable job of working on various stories. We're in the midst of not only telecommunicate a week, trying to recognize those folks for the job they do, but also get validated information out to the public, and certainly PIOs have done an outstanding job. Two more items, safety. Section continues to review the PPE usage. We're tracking burn rates throughout our nursing homes, burn rates for first responders, and making sure that we've got a clear supply chain, intact base upon various scenarios that can up that burn rate. So that is something that we are tracking on a daily basis. And as well as, as I've ended the last several presentations, from finance standpoint, we are capturing all the costs, including labor, materials, and equipment, to ensure that we have a clear documentation trail, as well as all of our Ts crossed and our Is dotted for when we get to the reimbursement phase, as this is effectively declared as action. And with that, I'll take any questions that you may.
What's another amount that you have documented in regard to what's potentially to be a claim or a trade or reimbursement?
So most of our expenses is in labor and PPE, with PPE outrun and everything. We're at $163,000 as of this point. And that does not include the city's costs. We have met our threshold. The city, it will certainly put us over that threshold of four as well, and then we've got McDowell County Schools, and any cost McDowell Tech has, under category of mercy protective measures, so all of that will be filed over the counties.
All right, the comments, questions? Did the Furb County, they had a nursing care facility that experienced a little breakout of COVID in a limited facility?
Yes, and as we completed operations at the end of last week, that was the trend that we're seeing, is you're starting to see more positive tests in congregant settings. We do not have any in McDowell at this point, and that remains one of the EOC's top priorities, is taking every mitigation effort possible to keep this out of congregant settings. And that's a, that's a big goal for the operations section. I mean, there's very close coordination with these facilities, and I think that's going to be key, is making sure we're supporting them in every way possible, and also building contingency plans for any need that may arise.
And I guess hats off to the two facilities here in McDowell County who are weeks ahead in doing what they could to, to save or to the people who reside there.
Absolutely. I mean, this, these are some of our most vocal citizens, and we, it's all hands on deck to protect them, as well as all of our citizens, but we've got a special focus on these congregant settings right now, during the pandemic.
And one more thing, I'd be quite, the embedded DSS employee at the EOC, I think that's outstanding. I mean, you've got a DSS staff there that can deal and interface with you guys to Lisa, Ashley, and that's a home run, so bear with all that. Great job.
Yeah, it's part of the whole community approach to the EOC and bringing, whether it's Business EOC or Rec or DSS in, which it's really important for these nursing homes to be able to pick up the phone, go to the designated representative with whatever question they have, and the DSS rep goes in the room, gets the question answered, and the caller right back. It's out of the red tape and...
In other words, McDowell County is going to be a pattern for other counties to look at in regard to pandemics? Is that what you're saying, William?
I think we've got a strong, we've got a strong setup to manage disasters, but it's because of the cooperation of each agency that's at the table. And it's not just a situation, it's everybody coming to the table.
Do you want to mention maybe four other questions, the Association of County Commissioners, the information you're sending out?
Yeah, so our public information officers have...
I said there's seven.
Seven different types of procedures or processes that we're using during this pandemic as best practices, so that can be shared as needs fit, but I do think that, and I would commend all of the representatives that have come to the table. I mean, you've got people that's been on conference calls every single day, sometimes multiple times a day, holidays, weekends, but everyone has come together. It's one team and one mission. That's, that's what we're here to do.
So out of 100 counties, you've got seven best practices that are being modeled now throughout the rest, the remaining of the 99 counties. I'd say if you had one or two, that would have been a home run, but you thought six, so hats off to you and your staff, Craig, what y'all guys are doing. Other comments, questions?
Yeah, I've got a question. I want to go back, and number one, I appreciate what y'all are doing. You know I do. You know where I stand with you guys. But we talked about the tents at the hospital. What was our contingency plan if we was in the middle of utilizing those tents? And then we got weather outbreak like we did, because you know, if you've been paying attention to the news, you've got a huge volcano erupting, you've got floods, you've got tornadoes, right in the middle of all of this pandemic. But what was our contingency plan if we couldn't utilize those tents?
So two things. One is, is we would go to Plan B and C depending on the weather forecast. So our situation even in the EOC is looking ahead. At our evening briefing, we got the high-impact weather briefing all the way through the end of the weekend. So we are in constant contact. We took those tents down 24 hours in advance of the first windstorm that was expected. The hospital has built various contingency plans. That's where they can do medical search. So today, you've seen public information come out that MyCareNow was being temporarily closed to allow for additional search capacity. So there are various plans that we can go to depending on the situation right now. But specifically where is going to depend on the number of patients, what the outside situation looks like, but this is something we would prepare for that a day in advance before we ever got a situation where we had a higher factor.
Your leadership has been unreal, and we appreciate the leadership that's over there. Because you can have a football team, but if you don't have a good coach, you've just got the boys running around in the field. So appreciate it.
I appreciate that, indeed. There's lots of smart people working in nursing services, and it's been a big team effort. It's, I'm proud to represent and come before you to give it a course.
Okay, any other comments, questions? There being, then, we, thanks for what you're doing. Keep up the good work. This time, it's a good item, B under our appointment schedule, and this is county operations updated by staff. Mr. Williams, go ahead, sir.
Very brief on this item, just wanted to reiterate where we stand apart from emergency services. Definitely gave shout-outs on these calls. You know, they work 24/7, just as much as the sheriff's office and our other folks that are out there every day, and that, when other folks have Good Friday off, of course, you know, they don't, so that's definitely appreciated. The other operations, no changes obviously since we discussed them last. Our buildings are still closed as far as the administration building, the annex, DSS is essentially closed to the public, although they do have some distribution there of applications. Spoke to Ms. Sprouse at DSS today. Teleworking is going really well. She wanted me to communicate that. I think you'll talk to her next week at that meeting, but that is going really well. Numbers are staying consistent to where they should be on processing, even with the increased numbers from the pandemic. So her staff has really taken to that really well and are being very productive in that setting. Most of our other operations do continue behind locked doors. Phones are still being answered. Taxes are still being paid, et cetera. EMS bills are being paid, collected, et cetera. And so that, the business of county government continues in just a slightly different way. But most people have been very patient with us and understanding, and where we have hiccups here and there, we've, we've worked with them. I've talked about our IT director, Mr. Davis, he has worked very closely with DSS, for example, on teleworking, and has had a lot of success there. So we're all folks on our side of the coin aren't maybe as used to different situations as emergency services, but the employees have been fairly resilient and we're proud of how they've reacted. And all employers are having issues with stress and worry and different things, but we're doing the best we can with the situation, and we're proud of the staff. No, no action requests at this point. We're just going to keep plugging along and do what we can.
Okay, comments, questions for staff? Did they get the look fixed on the phone system today?
I think so. We're looking into that and make sure, I did talk to that department head, and that employee was getting a lot of phone calls, so we'll make sure it's going to the right place, though.
Got you. All right. There being, let's move to our next item. It's good to, old business, this is our EMS capital project update. So we still have Mr. Keller with us, and Ashley, go ahead, sir, and let's say.
Yes, sir, and Mr. DePoister is here as well. So we are in the midst of bidding the, the two EMS stations. Station four with is the north station, the Old Credit Union, that is a renovation and expansion project, and the headquarters project, which is going to be open in a couple of weeks. We did open bids on Thursday for Station four, and so I'm not asking you to approve those tonight, because we're going to do it as a package deal, once we have both bids in hand and the financing. But just to let you know, the, we had nine bids come in. The lowest bid at this point is from Beam Construction, which is the current contractor for the courthouse project, as well as Old Fort Elementary. And I don't have the numbers in front of me. We do need to do some further verification on them, but the lowest bid was a little bit higher than the last estimate from Mr. Hamrick.
How much higher?
About $100,000 more than the last estimate, which was, I think, from October, Terry. So it's a little, that estimate is a little dated, but you prefer to see them lower than the estimate. So it was a fairly small project, but still quite a bit of interest. The headquarters project opens on the 23rd that afternoon, and Terry, I believe we had at least 12 contractors on that, on that bidder's list. They may not all bid, of course, but we've had a lot of interest in that one as well. And I've addressed in emails and different things with you that there is a lot of uncertainty with next year's budget because of the pandemic and sales tax and property tax and different impacts we anticipate. This is a, this would be an impact to our budget. However, we did have some funds set in for payment, and so that is a big positive in our favor. And I've, I know I've spoken specifically with the chairman that we see no reason to get off track with the bidding process at this point, because we'll have the bids in hand, hopefully banking bids in hand, and at, at least at that point, if not before, you can make the decision to pause the process if necessary. But with a lot of interest from the contractors, that is a positive, and so we're hopeful on the 23rd we have good bids.
Okay, comments, questions for staff? Terry, anything you need to add? Okay. All right. There being, then, we're going to the next item, then, let's overlook it, Ashley.
That was it on EMS. Thank you.
It's good to item B under old business board appointments, and we've got the planning boards, and we had a application that did not make it in our packet, so we're going to table this until next month. It would be the consensus of the board to do so. And also on the agricultural advisory board, there's six vacancies. We had one person apply, so we're going to go ahead and table that if the board so desires by consensus to give the time for more people to apply. So what's the prayer of the board concerning the planning board and the agricultural advisory board? Okay, motion table, second discussion, all in favor, say aye. You pose like a sign. We will vote on the tourism development authority. This is the second reading. There is one seat available. Was that that man in front?
Yes, this is my seat.
Okay.
For 50 or more minutes.
50 or more minutes, okay. We'll pass through to Terry.
That is unanimous for Nathan Galloway, sir, on the tourism development.
Okay, let's move under, move to new business, item A, administrative hours, Mr. Administrative hours, Mr. Williams, say.
Thank you, sir. You have a few items before the budget amendments. You have a memo in your packet, a request from the finance office to waive the late fee for a payment for room tax. You have the memo there explaining they did pay the taxes as owed, as well as the percentage late fee of 5%, but there is a $10 fee on top of that that was not included in the And so that you have an explanation there for your review and or approval or denial.
Okay, motion in the second discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, you pose like a sign.
Okay, the next item, also from finance, is the list of non-collectible EMS accounts. And these are either deceased persons without an estate or accounts that were worked for 10 years without payment, and most of those folks have no employment or other means to make the payment.
Motion approved, the EOC. They've got a motion approved, we've got a second discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, you pose like a sign.
And the last, before the amendments, there's a NIBA water system leak adjustment request, and you have that memo as well.
Okay, comments, questions? Motion, say, and discussion, all in favor, say aye. You pose like a sign. Okay?
Then you have budget amendments, GF 54 through 63, 911, F3 and F4, and Waste Enterprise 2.
Motion approved, if you have a question, you can tell us. Okay? Yeah, motion, say, and discussion, all in favor, say aye. You pose like a sign. Okay? All right, we've covered administrative hours, good to, and if the voters are watching, it may seem, here again, I'll say this about every other month in the meeting, it may seem like we're moving pretty quick, but commissioners have had this information since last Wednesday, and commissioners will ask questions and do research, and before we come to meet as a body to handle the business. So free information, they have had this information and had a chance to review it and ask appropriate questions. So with that being said, it's good, item B under new business, this is the animal services fee request. Mr. Williams, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. DePoister is here. If you have additional questions beyond what I can answer, but this is from Animal Services, also known as the Animal Shelter. The staff... The staff has worked with Mr. DePoister to be certified to administer rabies vaccinations. I believe all three of the staff persons are qualified to do it. Is that correct? And so that's a big accomplishment for that staff to be able to do that. And so we'd like to be able to do that for any animal that comes in without a rabies tag, just for our safety and the public's. And we're asking for a $10 fee to be instituted to cover the $3 vaccination and the staff time. So it's a fairly minimal cost. So if folks can't come in without, if animals come in without the rabies vaccination, we can do that. We would add this to our fee schedule if you approve it.
Motion approved, okay? Discussion. All in favor, say aye. And opposed, like, say aye. Okay? Take two. Let's go down to C, and the new business, this will be tax man, Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
These are fairly straightforward as far as the releases, rebills, refunds, et cetera.
Motion approved, okay? Okay, a motion, a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. And opposed, like, say aye. Okay? Let's go to Assistant Committee. Do we have anybody here, I see many staff and press, is anybody here that would like to speak here at Assistant Committee? Do we have anybody in the press that would wish to speak? There being none. Does any commissioner or staff have any other reports, complaints they need to relate to the board or each other?
I would like to say one thing. Chairman, I received, and I think Barry did too, but there was some talk and complaints, and hopefully the press will make note of this. It was stated that the Board of Commissioners was shutting down the fishing and recreational on Lake James, and that is certainly not the case. I would like to be noted, because the Board of Commissioners have never said anything like that or presumed anything such as that. If that ever happened, of course, it could be the state that do it. It certainly wouldn't be the Department of Board of Commissioners, so I'd just like to make note of that to them.
Also, there's a rumor circulating that the Board of Commissioners is requiring, are going to require citizens to wear face masks when they go in public, and there's potential fines if there's not one of them worn. You know, the CDC and people above us would have discussion with our staff long before they would make recommendation to this or regarding that. So that's another thing that got to sit out there too, that I've heard. Okay, you have any others?
I'll just tag in on what Tony said. I've gotten a call over the weekend. I told him, I said, that's totally false, and we just want to put it, put it down to a hush. But there is a thing on NorthCarolinaWildlife.org that people do not follow what's been recommended, common sense, social distancing. And it says right here on their, on their page, because I went and started pulling it up, it said, and this is from Gordon Myers, Executive Director with the North Carolina Wildlife Resource Commission, that failure to comply and people need to understand. And evidently, we had some issues at some of the boat ramps. I read some, some articles and stuff. Not here in McDowell, in other counties. Failure to comply will lead to closures of boating and fishing access areas. So people got, they have to use common sense. This crazy hysterical era that we're running in right now, you notice them. It's just, they've just got to use common sense, and it seems like we're lacking a little bit of that right now. We're just not thinking of that brain. So there is a warning out there on the Wildlife Resource. So it would be the state of North Carolina, not McDowell County.
And Tommy, very thanks for the input, the information note for our public. Any other comments, reports, complaints? There being none, just we've covered everything on our agenda for now. Great. Okay. Got your motion to adjourn to Monday? Next Monday. Okay. A motion, second discussion. All in favor, say aye. And opposed, like, say aye. All right, we'll be in adjourned.